There's something else when they're together.
Uh huh.
Right.
She uh, she's been texting me, she's got that new iPad.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
Happy, I'm just snow.
You should have not gave her your number.
Okay, I'll go.
Yeah, turn so here, that's all they get from texts.
But, yeah, we don't want to ask.
Well, I'm sure.
The biggest thing that really killed me inside out, I don't even leave my phone on every month. So.
Hi, this is Jenny.
Hi Jenny.
Can I talk to me?
Yeah, I asked Mad a little bit more about that, he was gonna dive in a little more detail, but.
Okay. Me, I just think it's cool.
But by the time you pay them, the payers, CDP probably same hourly, I don't know if you're really saving, I mean.
Going live.
I don't know.
It's a way to get rid of it.
Right, I agree.
We could ask them their political affiliation. Does everybody else?
Yeah, right.
I.
What?
Come on over here.
Oh my.
That was kind of the point of saying we're live.
Didn't work.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you didn't shoot the flare, it's somebody else looking for you.
Have they been phoning you?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor Beto, do you?
Morning.
Morning. Sergeant Smith here, good morning.
Morning.
He's New York's Attorney for Law Commissioners.
Morning.
Maya Vaughn, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Sure.
Hi Commissioner, how are you?
Morning, how are you?
Good, you have a minute or you gonna start right now?
We're gonna start.
For about thirty seconds?
We're gonna start here in a second.
Uh, LTC is down, the state did not renew their license for the photo side with the software. They knew it for eight months, evidently nobody else knew it, and then we have no ability to issue licenses. So we're working with the state sheriff's front office with the state to see what their mandate is going to be. But I'll be releasing a statement later this morning if we cannot issue today.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, we like?
Okay.
Morning everybody, please ask that you stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Dear holy Father, we thank you for your presence with us every second of each day. We ask that your love and peace lead us throughout this year. We just recognized National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day this past Saturday. Lord, we are a nation of laws. The fine men and women of law enforcement protect the line between good and evil. We thank them for their enormous sacrifice and service they provide to each one of us. We ask that you grant safety to those men and women who protect our communities. Next Monday, we will recognize Dr. Martin Luther King Day. On this year's anniversary, may we encourage all Americans to volunteer to help their communities promote equal rights for all Americans. We pray for all racism to cease. We know your love sees no color, we are all equal before you. That is the measure of your love, and we should honor and follow the example you set and instruct us to follow. We ask that you heal and guide our divided nation. We pray for the ones that have been directly affected by this pandemic. Heal, meet their needs. Father, we are so thankful that Eileen, our assistants, back with us this morning. We pray for your guidance in this meeting, amen. Pledge of allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands on one nation, on one land, indivisible, infinite, endless. This time we'll convene the Commissioners' public meeting and ask for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. I move to approve. Commissioner Mayor Beto, any line?
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Ask for public comment at this time, on agenda items only. Hearing none, on bid openings.
Heather Lehman is here with the bid opening.
Good morning Commissioners, this bid opening is for the golf carts, and we had two vendors apply for that.
That's trouble hearing that, you can speak up a little.
Can you give him the mic a little bit more?
She had two vendors that submitted bids.
The first vendor is Steven Gertriner.
How you spell the last name?
It's G-E-R-T-N-E-R. And they're out of Victor, New York. And they're proposing for 144 golf carts, $3,500.
Assuming each.
That's for each, yeah. Sorry.
Cart thirty thousand?
That's for each golf cart, not total. But the total, they have, the total is being $504,036 plus a new range vehicle, which they're roughly estimated to be $10,879.86.
Heather, this is Maya, did they provide a trade-in value for the current golf cart?
Um, let me check.
Do they have anything there?
I don't see like anything in the first few pages, so it might be throughout the document. It doesn't say on the, obviously, the estimated price.
Is there a company name associated with Steve?
It just says.
That's Club Car.
Club Car.
That's Club Car. Club Car.
And Heather, I'll be picking up all the bids from your office then.
Okay, that works Maya, thank you.
Thanks.
And then the next one is from Golf Cart Services, and this is out of New Oxford, PA. Okay, for 144 golf carts, they are proposing each coming in at $3,848. And then it has a grand total of $554,112. And then it says plus trades.
So Heather, if I understand that this Commissioner Mayor Beto, 30,840 per cart for a total of 5,5412, plus they want us to give them the old cart?
Yes, it's saying plus trades, now obviously it doesn't have an amount, it just says plus a trade, so. Was there any questions?
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
3.0, Heather, are you doing the accounts payable?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Good morning again Commissioners. This week's check run that will be distributed on Wednesday is in the amount of $6,296,862.18. And obviously, this is four weeks' worth of invoices.
Plus the checks that we sent out to some businesses, correct?
Yes, this is, those checks are included in this week's check run.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're seeing.
You're referring, you're referring to the care check, the COVID check?
Yeah, you're seeing them marked separately with the grants, I made sure to put them.
$864,232.
Yep.
I guess the one thing that stood out to me was Hunter and Lomison on Port Elevator. Do you know what that check was for, $58,000, was that? I didn't have the card, I didn't see the card in the office today.
That I believe is for an ongoing capital project.
Part of, part of it is the upgrade to the swipe access for the elevator. You know, so that you can swipe your card and it takes you where you need to go rather than getting with, rather than having to use key. But I think the two are separate, Hunter and Lomison and.
Is that for the back elevator with the inmates?
Yeah. We'll take you on.
Kill number six. I didn't really see anything else here.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
If you look at page six, it also includes a substantial payment for the radio Motorola 1.7 million plus another 751,000. Am I, am I incorrect on that?
Yeah, those are all capital projects.
Right, so it includes, because it's a lot of money, $6 million, even for four weeks of expenses, but it's got, right there, you've got 2.6 million in capital projects. You know, the Commissioner Mazzara mentioned the Hunter Lomison, but if you scroll down, you see the Motorola.
Commissioner, the Hunter Lomison?
Yeah.
I believe is the generator that was walked out on the roof.
Okay.
And if you take the capital improvements plus the COVID checks, that's basically half of what the total is for the time period.
Right.
You're down to about 3 million at that point.
Yeah.
I noticed Tyler Technology, I didn't write down the page because, but we're gonna be going live and they're gonna be starting to install those for assessment, taxation, assessment? And they're gonna be getting some training.
Pushback and we are, I think, beyond that point now.
Alright. Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the cash requirements?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie. Thank you Nikki, I'm sorry Heather. We used to say Nikki, have a good day.
Thank you.
Maya, do you just wanna go through all of yours so we're not interrupting each other?
Sure, that's fine.
Maya has 4.1 through 4.6.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning Maya.
The first item, 4.1, is to award bid for food products to Caesar and Kiko distributors. Unfortunately, we only had two bidders this time, Cisco actually submitted a bid. Unfortunately, the mail system, given the current state that it's in, never got your timeline, so unfortunately, they were missed out on the opportunity this time.
I'll move to approve.
Well, well, let me ask you a question, Mr. Smith, sir. In a case where the mail got, was delayed, could we, could we table this until we saw that bid? What happens if that bid is tens of thousands of dollars less?
Yeah, I would say if the postmark on the, their envelope was before the deadline, that's not their fault.
Well, we never even received it, it got bounced back, so, I mean, I don't know how, you know, to do that. I'd leave that up to the solicitor, but we never even received it, it just got bounced back to them, the courier never, the courier returned it.
Um, so I'm trying to understand, it was postmarked and returned, what was the return for?
Well, what she told me, and there's the gray area, when I talked with the individual, my point of contact at Cisco, she said that they sent it out timely, but, and talking with the other, her other counterparts, that it actually was returned, and that's really all the information that I got. And she apologized.
I would agree with you Commissioner Metzger, that if it were postmarked and the delay was through no fault of the bidder, that you could accept the bid, but because you never received the bid on a timely basis or even an untimely basis, I don't think you can accept that bid as presented.
Okay.
If they wanna resubmit, that's fine, but I think you have to reboot the process.
Maya, we, the current contract is with Kiko as well, isn't it?
Yes, Feathers and Kiko both have been longstanding, are bidders for food products. I will tell you, the majority of our items do come from those two companies, Cisco gets a, well, more than a handful of items, but the majority of our purchases comes from Feathers and Kiko.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So Carrie?
The next item I have, 4.2.
Maya, I'm sorry, can I, you know, I know that in the past sometimes we buy, does this mean they're totally out for the year, or does it just mean it's round?
No, just for the quarter, just for the quarter.
That's what I thought, they'll be back in next quarter bidding again, right?
Yes, and actually, you know, this is where the electronic bidding process is gonna be great, I just sat in training yesterday, so that's gonna be implemented by the next time we do the bid, and we won't have to worry about, you know, using the mail service, because with electronic bidding, that's the beauty of it, everything's done electronically.
Yeah, that'll eliminate this, from future problems happening like that.
Yep.
And we appreciate the Controller and your efforts to get this electronic bidding.
It's a great idea, and I think it's gonna streamline things much more efficiently, and just overall better for the county.
Need to vote.
Oh yes, all fair side?
Did you, do you move and second?
Yeah, yeah, we did. Commissioner?
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Wait, which one is that, that's the bidding, that's not the Icon, right?
No, I didn't get the Icon yet.
I'm sorry, we already did this. Okay, move on to 4.2.
Yeah, 4.2 is the vote on amendment to agreement with Icon Fire Solutions, and that is to perform our annual and quarterly inspections of the fire sprinkler systems. This amendment strictly just to extend the term date to December 31st, 2021 at the same rate.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie?
The next item, 4.3, is to vote on amendment to agreement with fire fire protection. This is for the design and installation of the kitchen hood and fire suppression system. This is just to extend the term of the agreement until February 28th of this year, so they can complete the project.
Any questions on this agreement? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie?
The next item, 4.4, is to vote on the 2021 advertising agreement with Sun Gazette. As you know, we have a longstanding advertising agreement with Sun Gazette for our advertising needs. I was able to negotiate it to remain at the same cost, so that means our daily cost would be $11.90, and our Sunday advertising cost would be $14.15. And again, based off of our usage, we're going to continue with the 3,000 inch of advertising.
Okay, any questions, comments? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie?
Maybe we can just make a quick, for the public, the reason it has to be in the Sun Gazette is because under state law, it has to be in a newspaper of general circulation, which is defined as one that people pay to buy and has a certain coverage area, right Maya?
That is correct, yep.
So we can't, if you sometimes wonder why we don't advertise, it's some of the other periodicals that are free, that's why.
Okay.
Um, the next item I have is 4.5, it's to vote on agreement with Maxwell Smart PA Private Detective Services. This is for private investigation services for the public defender's office on an as-needed basis.
Aren't there TV shows?
Pretty catchy, get smarter.
Get smarter.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments?
Oh, you were thinking Max Smart, not Max Wolf.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mazzara, was that your?
Yes, you're correct, get smarter, whatever.
Famous TV show.
Yes.
Yes.
Not animals.
Right.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye? So Carrie?
Alright, and my last item is 4.6, and that's to acknowledge the list of contracts approved by the Director of Administration for the month of December, and there were six.
Okay, any questions on those contracts?
Just to give the public information, snow plowing, cleaning, preventative maintenance of generators, maintenance of suppression system, fire monitoring system.
Yeah, when you look at the preventative maintenance of generators, $90 an hour, you get $3,200. And when we're talking about the generators, are we talking about all generators, including the ones on the towers, or what is this?
No, that's a separate, that's a separate agreement, usually Hunter and Lomison, that's all the maintenance and inspection for the generators for 911.
Okay.
Backup generators, facilities.
For the facilities, yep, okay.
Yeah, this is just for maintenance-related ones that he has on the facilities.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so Carrie?
Thank you Commissioners.
Thank you Maya.
Thanks Maya.
4.7, Jerry Kennedy, voting on Proofpoint renewal quote for county email security services.
Morning Commissioners. Morning.
Uh, this is the Proofpoint Annual Renewal, this is our email security service, $15,146.25. Provides spam filtering, virus filtering, et cetera. Each month, we receive over 100,000 emails, and 40 to 60% of them are filtered out.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Carrie, as we attend the CCAP conferences and some of the webinars, and I'm not sure, I know it's not on our top priorities, but a lot of our cybersecurity, it seems to me, especially in governments, are being hit and attacked frequently, and it could be one of the, a major expenditure in the future. What do we do, give an example of what our department does as far as backing up a company like this, you know, Proofpoint? What is, what are our responsibilities, is this here, and what do you have set up for safeguards? And if you can put dollar amount, you know?
I'd like to caution that if what the answer is, is going to reveal sensitive security information that might be used to the county's detriment, that it not be disclosed and that it be discussed in an executive session, as is allowed.
Okay, thanks, without being specific.
We, we do approach, as most companies and enterprise environments do, we do approach it as a defense in depth. You know, there are several levels of filtering that have to occur. Obviously, you know, business has to continue, so there are things that we have to allow. So if you get a Word document, you know, in an email, that's common practice, everybody gets Word documents, that's some of the, the training that we go through to get people to recognize what may or may not be legitimate, as well as, you know, surfing the web. What may or may not be a legitimate website, a lot of folks will go to your search engine and just type in something and click on the first link that shows up, and that's not necessarily a good practice. We try to enlighten folks, but in, in the cybersecurity world, you're, you're at the mercy of the end user. The end user is the end and final last point of defense. We have to allow you to do stuff in order to do your job, and we hope that we've given you enough knowledge to give you pause before you click.
And you have indeed tested us all, you know? Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you Carrie.
Quick, quick question, third paragraph down, you say the Proofpoint lost anywhere from a handful of several hundred emails to contain a virus, does it actually detect the virus in the email, or?
Yes.
What, is that, so it's part of it also detects viruses?
Yes. We've, we've had as many as almost 1,000 in one month.
Wow, thank you.
Carrie, in your memo here, you sum it up very well, we have to write every single time, a hacker only has to be read once.
Correct.
So, that's a good point, and on our personal computers, we have to be very cautious in when we're using our computers at work, we have to be just as cautious, because they only have to be read the one time, like you said. And if we make that mistake, it could be a fatal mistake, it shuts down a system for, for days or weeks, and so, I think this is money well invested. We have to make sure that everything's protected, there's a lot of bad actors out there.
Yep.
And we have to make sure that they don't infiltrate us.
There's, there's certainly much more that we could do, it's, it's a balancing act.
Okay, thank you. Got a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
So Carrie?
4.8, Jenny Fittiano, vote on amendment to Susquehanna Riverwalk.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
This is a acceptance of a one-year grant extension for our DCNR grant through the end of December 2021, and that will allow time to complete design and engineering of the Riverwalk Extension Project.
And for people listening, where is the location of that proposed extension?
Sure, the Riverwalk Extension will go from the existing Riverwalk Extension, or Riverwalk, which ends at Maynard Street, kind of near the Burger King over there, and this will take it to Susquehanna State Park. So right now, we're currently designing the new trail, but we need additional time to work out some engineering for it. COVID kind of delayed a few things and delayed additional meetings with some key partners for the project, so the one-year extension will give us time to coordinate and do some design for, for the final project.
Thank you. The Riverwalk has been a wonderful idea in the county, it's been heavily used, and this is just an extension of this, this usage that will enhance the area even more, so thank you.
You know, I did it after the chairman, one of the, I think one of the great things about that is the county taxpayers didn't pay for any of the current Riverwalk. about that is the county taxpayers didn't pay for any of the current Riverwalk constructions, did they? Jenny, you may not.
I, no, it was, it was a little bit for my time. I know there's a lot of funding that's been leveraged over time, and for this current design project, we're actually leveraging, oh, I believe it's, it might be growing greener, or Act 13 funding, to leverage the DCNR grant. So it's funding that earmarked specifically for recreation and outdoor use for this project.
And I only mention that because sometimes constituents will see us spending money on these projects and they, or approving contracts, and they say, you know, why are you doing this? Well, as the Chairman said, it adds to the community, and oftentimes, we do it with state or federal grants, and we'd go to another community if we didn't use them, so obviously, and plus just the overall great addition to the quality of life in the community.
And one of the few things that we can do to enhance our health is to walk and ride bikes during this pandemic, so it, it's greatly appreciated this time that it's an access for people to continue to exercise.
Good point.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, are you on the line?
Ma'am.
Jason, Yorx has 4.9 through 4.14. Do you just want to go through them? Okay.
Commissioners, first item, 4.9, is an amendment with the agreement that we have with Croft Chemical Company. This is a 2018 contract that we have with them. We purchased our chemicals that we use for our odor trailers, deodorizers along the screens and the litter fences that you see those little white trailers. This is a two-year extension with no price increase.
Okay, any comments or questions? Here, now can I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, item 4.10, this is an amendment to the agreement with Process Control Solutions LLC. This was a 2015 contract, they provide maintenance and upgrades to all of our, any of our boiler controls, anything where we need control, any kind of PLC work, controls work, they step in help, they help us, they can help us with our heating and air conditioning and our boilers and so forth. It was a 2015 contract, this new one will be a five-year extension. The admin, the pricing was at fifty-five dollars, went to sixty dollars, engineering tech went from one-ten to one-fifteen, and the process control engineering went from one-twenty-five to one-thirty. So basically, everything increased five dollars an hour, and that will be a five-year extension, seeking your approval.
Okay, and there will be no, there will be no increases over those five years?
No, sir.
Okay. Yep. Have a motion to accept?
I'll move to approve.
How's that?
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you. Commissioners, 4.11. 4.11 is a rental agreement with Croft Chemical Company. So it is a rental agreement, but there is no cost. The chemical, this agreement allows us to use four of those white trailers from Croft Chemical. Those trailers are the ones that have the blower system in them, that pushes the odor neutralizer throughout the litter fences. We have five of the trailers, one we own, and four we rent from Croft again at no, at no price. So this is just a rental agreement at no cost.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve. I do have one question.
Yes.
Is, is this automatically pushed through, or is it detection of odor when we start to utilize the system?
No, Commissioner, what it is, a lot of it, we base off the outside ambient temperature. The chemicals, the neutralizers, really don't have an effective rate below fifty degrees. So as soon as it reaches forty-five, fifty degrees, we turn them on, then they'll just run automatically. They have a metering system, they just meter the neutralizer out for the remainder of the time. And once the temperature drops, like right now, we really can't run them because there's no effective use of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item 4.12, this is the rejection of the bid that we received from Worthen Company on the Leachate Tankliner. Commissioners, if you recall back, I believe it was November seventeenth, we opened the bids, we received one bid from Worthen Company in the amount of seven million eight hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. The, after review and much discussion, we are rejecting the solo bid, which we have the right to, and this is simply a letter that I have in front of you for your signature and approval to reject the bid.
Who is the company's name again, Jason?
Worthen Company.
Worthen Company, okay.
They're located in Piper'sville, PA.
Okay.
Okay, and then will this be put back out for bid?
That is yet for discussion, Commissioner. We're still, we're still deciding on our next, who's what we're gonna do.
Okay. Can I have a motion to reject the solo bid for the Leachate Tankliner?
Yeah, I'll move to approve that rejection.
How's that?
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item, 4.13, amendment to the agreement with Sunoco LLC. This is an agreement we have with them from 2019. They provide diesel and gas, more diesel, that's mainly what we've purchased from Sunoco. It extends a two-year agreement at a no change in pricing. So that was, that was very nice that we were able to get two years of no price difference.
Absolutely. Okay, any comments or questions? Here, now can I have a motion?
So moved.
My second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you. Commissioners, lastly, I have item 4.14. This is amendment to the agreement that we have with Fairway Laboratories. This was originally a 2019 contract, and we're seeking a two-year extension. We have a two-year extension in front of you for approval at no price increase. Fairway is a company that provides us analytical work when we do our sampling, quarterly, semi-annual, annual sampling that we must do on the surrounding wells, people, the local citizens' water system, we always test. So any of the water testing we pull out of wells, we send to Fairway. And again, it's a two-year extension with no price increase.
Okay, great. Any questions or comments? Have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
How's that?
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it. Have a nice day.
You too, Jason.
Thank you.
4.15, Director McDermott, to vote on workers' compensation policy renewal with AmTrust North America.
Commissioners, seeking your approval today for the renewal of the county's workers' compensation, I'll see, the annual amount is four hundred and four thousand and thirty-nine dollars. Just as a comparison, if we looked at what the quote was from another association that we tried to leverage good deals from, their price was six hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. You say we had another quote? Or comparison?
Yeah, it was included in the renewal. I didn't want to name the association.
Okay, oh, okay, I understand. This is something that maybe three years ago we'd been out, was it, three or four now? It goes by fast.
Yeah.
And maybe it's time to put it up for bidding in, just to keep the pencil started in the following year.
Okay.
We appreciate both companies that had our workers' compensation, and they just did it in a different manner. One, we got rebates, and the other one, we got a guaranteed rate that we wouldn't have to change our budget for, so I think it may be time to put it up again.
And Commissioner Mayor Beeta had a question on it, researched it, do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, the two main areas of increase, one was the, I think I mentioned that they go back two years, so while we had a good 2020, the prior year was not particularly good, I think we had two hundred and twenty thousand in workers' comp claims. So when we get the renewal notice for next year, whether we, you know, we can still put it out for bid, but the, the year 2020, and hopefully if 2021 is a good year, we'll have a better experience rating, which is what that refers to. Then the other part of it was that we had a higher payroll in our law enforcement and some other categories, and the payroll, of course, is determined by whether, you know, when wages go up, the payroll goes up, if we hire more people in a particular category, the payroll goes up. So the, the other part of the increase was due to a higher payroll in a couple of categories. One was, I think, law enforcement and general county. So, but I think it's a good practice, as Commissioner Miss Dervin just mentioned, to put it out for bid, you know, maybe next year or so.
Yep, I agree.
I guess what, what I'm saying is I think that the increase under the circumstances was fair as it reflected what the terms of the policy were, that experience rating and the, and payroll, you know, that's how they calculated.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the workers' compensation policy renewal?
So moved. I'll second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Aye.
And 4.16, with Director McDermott voting on the Roberts Company agreement.
Commissioners, seeking your approval to, I guess, renew our contract with the Roberts Company. Roberts Company is the firm that we use for temp services, and this just extends, or gives another contract through the end of the year, 2021.
Okay, any questions or comments?
And Matt, this is simply if we, if we need temps, we, we use this. There's no obligation and?
Yes, Commissioners, this is a as-needed basis.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the agreement with Roberts Company?
I'll move to approve.
My second.
All fairies say aye?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Commissioners comment?
I'd like to make a comment regarding the vaccines. There's a lot going on in the word, in the rumor world about how the vaccines are being Spoke to a constituent yesterday and then reached out to Steve Johnson at UPMC. They have thousands of dosages, doses, dosages of the vaccine currently at UPMC. Right now, what they've done is they've recently vaccinated the non-UPMC affiliated healthcare workers in the region, consistent with the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Where the problem lies is, yesterday, we spoke to Congressman Keller about this. I spoke to some friends down in Florida over the weekend that are in their early eighties. They're retired, they live in the villages, they had their vaccines two weeks ago. And why is that not going on in Pennsylvania? This past Friday, we received from the Governor's Office the vaccine plan update, which is why is this coming to us on Friday, January the eighth? When it was on the CDC website earlier, and this should have been done prior to the vaccines being even approved. They should have had a game plan on the phases, on who falls into what phase, before the vaccinations were even approved. But like the Department of Health does, they wait, and they wait, and then they micromanage. And that's exactly what the phone call when I had last night with Steve Johnson, he expressed that. They are micromanaging the healthcare systems on how to distribute the vaccines. That's why you see the inconsistencies going on. We have fire halls, we have the Lightcoming County Fairgrounds, we could be doing vaccinations daily from these sites and getting it to the people who choose to have the vaccines. But instead, they have to wait for the state to give them the permission to distribute the vaccines according to these phases. This is outrageous, it is government at its worst. Again, it's government being involved in things, instead of just setting the guidelines and then getting out of the way, they have to micromanage everything. They've done it with the restaurants, with the businesses, less than two percent of people who have caught COVID have been from restaurants and businesses, less than two percent nationally. Yet businesses are closing down daily because of the overreach, the control, and this is just another example of the state trying to control something and micromanage something when the health experts can do this and get the vaccines out the way they should be. I urge every resident in this county who chooses to have a vaccine to contact the Department of Health immediately, flood their phone lines, flood their emails, and tell them that this is nonsense, let our health providers get these vaccines out instead of micromanaging them.
Commissioner Mayor Beeta, do you have anything?
Over this time, no, no.
Okay, I have a, I have a couple. You know, last Tuesday, I mentioned about election integrity, and then you saw what happened on Wednesday, and then CCAP, County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, I sit on a, sit on that board, and their top priority is election reform, integrity, just getting it right, okay? It was signed by, I can't remember how many Commissioners signed onto it, maybe twenty, some counties, thirty, forty, I didn't see the final number, that sending it to our elected officials to have them review it. And, and I, I certainly hope that our elected officials look at this and understand that there, there needs to be some corrections within the Act 77. I will be keeping my eyes peeled on their decision whether to act or just defer, defer or not do anything. I attended NACO Committee, it's the National Association of Counties, I sit on the Finance, Pension and Intergovernmental Affairs Board, and yesterday, we had a meeting, and I want to go over just a couple things that were given to us regarding the omnibus bill. Let's see here. In December 21st, 2020, Congress announced the 2.3 trillion bipartisan omnibus bill appropriations for the federal funding, and 1.4 trillion of funding for the federal government through, that which includes 1.4 million for the government through the fiscal year of 2021, and then 900 billion for the coronavirus relief package. How it broke out is, and we're going back to the 900 billion, was forty-five, and I can send this out, and I will send it out to Mike from the paper if he wants to see it. Forty-five billion went to transportation. In that transportation, fourteen billion went to transit infrastructure grants, fifteen billion went to airline payroll support, one billion went to airline contractors, one billion Amtrak, two billion to bus and ferry operations, two billion airport improvement program, of which we, we've utilized that grant program, and 10 billion went to federal aid and highway program. Eighty-one billion went into education. That broke down to 22.7 billion in higher education, emergency relief, public and private. That broke down to 22.7 billion in higher education, emergency relief, public and private, 4.5, 4.05 billion to the governor's emergency education relief, 818 million to the Bureau of Indian Education in outlying areas, and 54.3 billion elementary and secondary school emergency relief. Education received a, a lot of that. And then 82 billion to the public health and community well-being, which broke down to 25 billion in emergency federal rental assistance. And, and I think that's a, you know, that's very important, the rental assistance, because, you know, it's not just the, the people that suffered, losing their jobs and not being able to afford their rent, it's also to the landlords that have mortgages that weren't collecting rents as, as well. 22 billion went to testing and tracing and COVID-19 mitigation programs for the state. So Commissioner Maribito's request to, to put dollars into testing, we should probably be receiving some from the state, and I do not, it's not broken down to the state allocations yet. 13 billion to SNAP emergency funding, 10 billion to childcare and development block grant, 4.25 billion substance abuse and mental health services. There's another topic of interest for the CCAP and its priorities, because as we're, we're looking at our prison population, our mental health positions are quite staggering as far as I'm concerned. And then 3 billion went to healthcare provider relief fund, and, you know, 250 million went to the Head Start program. So that's a breakdown, I'll send this to Mike via email, so if you want to report it, you may.
That's all I have to report.
Okay. I just also want to add, we will be meeting with the airport authority this Thursday. We've expressed our displeasure about how American Airlines continues to treat our region, and we've made that known to the airport authority, and we're going to be meeting with them this Thursday, moving forward what the, what the plans are going to be, so we'll be reporting back on that. Commissioner, you have anything?
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting, the 800-pound gorilla in the room is what happened last Wednesday at the Capitol. There's no need to beat a dead horse, it's been on the news. I'll leave you with this, my son said to me he was appalled at the behavior of the prejudiced people who illegally stormed the Capitol. Well, I didn't even know what the word meant, so I had to look it up. F-L-H-E-I-T-I-O-U-S. For our kids out there, just, I think, try to understand that we, we don't do this, this isn't how our, our democracy works, and that hopefully we can grow from this and move on and learn some lessons from it. Again, I, we don't need to beat a dead horse about it, but it is, it's a bad, for me, it was a bad day, as well as a, you know, shocking. But it brought me back to the Nixon resigning back in, I think, 1974, and I just thought, wow, this is quite amazing. So I hope everyone has a good week and that we continue to keep our community strong. We had some good news there about Primus and about the, hopefully, the growth there.
Yep, they'll be relocating their headquarters here from South Dakota and expanding, which is great news. And we'll be meeting with the ShopBack owners, the new owners, in the near future, not the immediate future, but the near future. And so there's some good, good upbeat news for the community. I agree with your thoughts on the, what happened in the nation's capital. We condemn all violence, and I think it's important that both sides condemn all violence. And unfortunately, that didn't happen this past summer, when we saw violence taking place that continues to take place in Portland, in the cities across the US, where they're burning businesses down, they're burning police cars, and they're telling the police to stand back, stand back, do nothing while these people's lives were in ruins. However, they didn't hesitate last Wednesday to tell the police to move forward. So you can see the hypocrisy that goes on. Violence is violence no matter who's doing it, and it should all be condemned, and the police should be able to arrest all people that are condemning, or condoning violence and doing violence. So that's an important message to learn going forward, that the hypocrisy has to stop on both sides, on both sides. Okay?
I was amazed that, you know, we saw in Seattle, we saw in these places, if you read the reports, literally thousands of arrests, and yet at the Capitol, nobody, I mean, I don't think, they arrested maybe 10 people at the incident, they now are trying to find people across the country, but I was really not understanding why they didn't arrest people on the spot. And I, I've read in various places that they're actually investigating whether some people within the Capitol Police were involved. I mean, there was questions as to how these rioters knew which offices to go to. You know, if you've ever been to the Capitol, it's not exactly like their roadmap.
No, it's not.
No, it was, it was definitely planned, Commissioner, we all know it was planned and, and it was, it was, but it wasn't, there was 3 million people down there, there was 3 million people down there, then, and a lot of them were, a majority of them were peaceful.
3 million where?
In the Capitol last week. I talked to people that were there, that were there, there was between 2 to 3 million people that were in the Capitol. Not all of them went down to, or down in Washington, I should say, not all of them went to the Capitol.
Capitol Building.
Capitol Building, but they were in Washington, 2 to 3 million. There was a lot of our local residents that were down there, I spoke to, and it was peaceful. There was a, a group that decided to take the law into their own hands, which was in, completely inappropriate, and they should be prosecuted. But the people that's arrested this past summer, I remind you, most of them might have been arrested, but they're not being prosecuted, because the local prosecutors are dropping the charges because the liberal DAs are letting them go. To be arrested and prosecuted and convicted is two different things, and the people in Washington that did this should be not only arrested, but prosecuted and convicted, if the evidence proves that.
And can I add, just to get off the subject, that Lycoming County should seize the opportunity that's granted to us by an exodus of businesses leaving large metropolitan areas and areas of high taxation. We're, we're seeing that ShopBack was repurchased, which is tremendous value, and Digger moving in, and then Primus, okay? Our area has a lot to offer and a lot of space to offer it. So, you know, I'd urge, you know, I look at loyal stock township as a, as a, as a great example of, of what happens when there's growth in a municipality or county or state. They can keep their taxes low because they can spread it out over larger, you know, amounts of people.
Absolutely.
And we should get together with municipalities and, you know, have some type of summit to say, hey, how do we seize these opportunities? And we are seeing them leave California.
Going to Texas.
Yeah, they're going to, to business-friendly areas. And I, I really believe that we have to make Lycoming County more business-friendly when it comes to permitting and the time required to get jobs accomplished. So let's, let's have a summit and see what we can bring to the table.
Absolutely. We have to do it peacefully. You know, to hear people that were down there last Wednesday that were peaceful, to hear that they're losing their jobs because they were there, they were just there at a protest, okay? People didn't lose their jobs last year when there were marches this past summer. They said they had to write the First Amendment, they could march peacefully. Well, a lot of those people last week marched peacefully, and for them to be targeted as a whole is wrong, as a whole is wrong. There's hypocrisy there. It needs to be, everybody needs to be treated with respect on both sides. The hypocrisy has to stop. Everybody has the right to a peaceful protest. The ones that get out of hand, they need to be arrested and prosecuted.
Yeah, I, I think though that they are not analogous, they're not, they're not comparable. One of them was an assault on, and an effort to try to stop voting and calculating the electoral vote. The other one were people expressing their anger at, at what they viewed as police, you know, actions that were not...
And that's, that's fine, Commissioner, but you don't burn things down, you don't burn things down, you don't burn police cars.
It's amazing, it's amazing to me that we, the conversation that, and you're entitled to say anything you want, but the conversation that I had was referring to last Wednesday, because we have spoken all summer and all spring about the demonstrations that went on. I mean, it's like I heard people saying that they were in TIVA and there were other groups agitating. I mean, it's absolutely false. And I guess one of the things that, it's like saying the elections weren't fair. The elections in this community were absolutely fair, and everything, 80 courts or 50 courts have determined that there was no fraud in the elections. And I, the only thing I think is that as elected officials, we have to start to stand up and say what the truth is, because if we don't, people who are not spreading the truth lead people, this is what's bad to me, the people who are getting arrested who did these things, I mean, obviously they're, they have free will, but no one, you know, they've gone out on this limb based on something they've been told that is not true. I mean, if you believe in, in the court system, if 50 courts review it and they don't come up with anything, at a certain point, you have to say to yourself, well, there's either a huge conspiracy, including the entire judicial system of the country, or maybe what I'm being told isn't true. It saddens me that a lot of these people, it's like that young kid who was led this summer and shot those people, you know? Of all sides, all sides.
Well, I agree.
Maybe all I would say to our youth is, think about what you do, stand up for principle, but think about what you do and don't get misled by people who may be using you for their own purposes. That was, that was my...
Yeah, I agree with you, Commissioner, I believe the Russians were in that, that march.
All right, moving along.
So we have completed the agenda for this week?
No.
Or I'm sorry, we, I'm sorry, we have public comment, yes, we have public comment, I apologize. Do we have any public comment? We don't have anybody in the audience?
I have one on...
But we have one online, yes.
MC Green, she's asking about the podium being moved as discussed in last week's meeting.
Yes, we'll be working on that.
Do you have any?
Carrie, can we make that happen before next week?
We...
Director.
Director.
We received that question from Friday's prison board, and it was very unique that we had a public comment, which was nice. We are taking a look into it, it's not as simple as just putting a presenter up front. There are security concerns when we have members of the public that want to also speak at the podium. So we're taking a look at it and developing some options.
Matt, would it be easier just to install another camera that, in another part of the room that just is focused on the podium?
We're, we're looking at that, Commissioner, we're checking all options.
Um, you know, we have a couple gentlemen here from the...
Yes. We, first of all, we have any air public comments?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr.?
Yes.
This is Sheriff, could I, could I speak for this?
Yes, then we'll invite you to, if you want to say anything in the audience. Okay, go ahead, Sheriff.
Uh, first, I, I never realized that the county brokers a, a fee with the Sun Gazette, and, you know, we do, we do quite a bit of advertising out of our office for a number of reasons, so what I'd like to do is have my staff meet with purchasing and see if we can piggyback on that, on that schedule that we get from the Sun Gazette, if you commissioners think that would be okay. I think that makes sense, I didn't realize it, but maybe we can get a better, a better price.
Oh, absolutely, Sheriff. Yeah. You should talk to Maya, because she can add that, and she negotiates the, with Sun.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. Number two, I just said to my, all my staff and then to department heads and to you commissioners, my license to carry system is completely down. It seems there's this program called Adobe Flash, and of course, you know me, to me, Adobe is something that folks lived in, in New Mexico, Adobe Hotz, so I don't even know what that means, but I do know it means that it's not functional, because that particular license expired effective this morning with no more tech support, and I don't believe it even exists. Well, on the state level, somebody must have not realized it doesn't exist anymore either because it's no longer in existence, so we can't take, we can't take photographs of the applicants from the county who come in to get their license. So I made my contacts at the state level, we're looking at it right now to see what the state's going to do to Band-Aid this, to get us by, so we can issue licenses again. I've, I've issued a short statement that will, that will go out, waiting for us, a statewide statement from our, the Sheriff's Association front office, to have a uniform statement that we could share if the state doesn't come through very quickly, with being able to reinstitute the ability to share licenses. It simply means that the photo part of the license is that specific flash, Adobe Flash component, and that licensure is now expired and can, and I believe a new vendor has to be secured in order to make it happen again. I don't know what that means as far as delay, but we're going to let our folks know who are coming in for license to carries, we're going to get it out media-wide, so we can let our folks know that it wasn't anything on the county side, on the sheriff's side that caused this, this was some oversight at the state level, and, and unfortunately, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a mess. Any questions, Commissioner Mesker, on that?
No.
Okay. The last comment, of course, is going to be the Washington DC situation last week. You know, of the number, of the number of folks who were there, the reports that I'm getting in and I'm seeing is about less than 1% of that number, I think it was even less than half a percent, actually breached the Capitol proper and the Capitol property. And we're talking less than 1% of what otherwise in that city was a reasonably orderly event throughout the city, less what we saw occur at, at the Capitol. And, and that's troubling for me because, because whether or not we agree or disagree with the results of the election, and we've talked about this all year, this past year with our own events that we've had, we understand folks have the right to protest. I actually know several busloads of folks that went down. So, I know several groups went down on buses, went down, were not involved in anything, and then came back without any, without their hair being messed up or involved with the law enforcement component. So it's unfortunate that the moral majority that were there, extremely large number of folks, get the rap for those few, and you could actually probably say if you counted fast, you could probably count how many were in that complex, several hundred, who create that type of stigma that everybody that was there was being disruptive. The other comment I want to make is, in, in my opinion, as I watched it unfold, I watched all, all kinds of accounts on media, and I, I was obviously watching my intel, my intelligence side that I can see, it looked to me like, like the law enforcement component was woefully unprepared for that size of crap. And that's really disheartening for me, because the thin blue line, those men and women on the line, on the front line there, including the officer who lost his life, they struggled to deal with what they dealt with. I've had people say to me, well, Sheriff, why didn't they arrest everybody? Well, when you're outnumbered, you know, hundreds to 10, hundreds to 20, hundreds of 30, you pick your poison. You, you've got to determine when you're going to make the move and not make the move because you're outnumbered, you know, 10 to 1, 20 to 1, 30 to 1, 40 to 1. I'm disappointed that there was a breakdown in not having the support that I believe they needed to have in place and staged, and not had to be, wouldn't have to be used if they were staged, but if they were needed, similar to what we had here in this county last year, if needed, they could have deployed. When you see, when you see armed law enforcement coming into a scene like that from the back, that's a bad day. And you saw it all day long that day. All the law enforcement coming in to do backup were coming in from the back to the front, back to the front. And, and I'm disheartened by the breakdown, knowing that there was going to be this size crap... of crowd. We all knew it weeks before, that there was going to be a large gathering there. And maybe if we had had law enforcement in place and we'd had a show of law enforcement, you wouldn't have had that breach at that Capitol building, because that Capitol building had very few officers present during this situation. And I guess I speak for the men and women who were on the front line and had to struggle with what they struggled with. So I pray that we have, that we have peace, that we have, we have better, a better working relationship on both sides. Whether you're Democrat or Republican, it doesn't help the public for us not to have compromise and at least not to be civil, and it just seems like we're, we are going further and further from civility, which is really, really dangerous for not only us, but our, but our children and our grandchildren. So with that, Commissioner, that's all I have. Thank you.
Sheriff, I, you know, I, I think you bring up a good point, and I don't fault the Capitol Police. You, you look at what happened, they were completely outnumbered. They, they couldn't, they couldn't arrest them. I mean, when I served in the state legislature, you know, the, the police who, who protected the Capitol, you didn't have tons and tons of.
Correct.
Correct. You didn't, you didn't have this kind of situation, and, and I just am dumbfounded as to how, because you're right, for weeks it was on, on, on the, on the social media, come to Washington, come to Washington. And, and it was actually dangerous to put those Capitol Police officers in a position where they're expected to try to defend a building with not enough people.
I agree.
And.
I, I agree, Commissioner.
Yeah, and, and I agree, and I, and I hope that, you know, what you said is true. We have to try to, we have to try to just keep the civility here for our children's sake. We're all going to be dead and gone, but we should at least try for their sake.
We are, and, and to this county's credit, if you look at our, at those, at our, in our own world, at the protests last year, we could be, we could be a model example in this country of, of how to manage those situations, and, you know, any, any specific trigger could have changed the complexion of those groups for those events that we had in a heartbeat. And because of our planning, because of our coordination, because of the fact we work together as a team at the county level and across the county with our partners, both on the political side and on the law enforcement side, I think we're the example of how it can be done and handled, handled well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Just to add that yesterday, the Capitol Police Chief who resigned actually had requested the National Guard prior to this happening and was turned down. My question is, why?
Well, it's interesting, Colonel McDermott can help us with this. There are two ways to request the Guard, I believe, that, that the mayor can do it or, or federally it can be done on the federal side, which I think was done last Wednesday. Colonel McDermott, can, can you help us with that? Because I agree, that doesn't make sense to me either.
DC is a unique animal. It is nothing like a, a regular state when it comes to requesting National Guard assets. In particular, it's controlled by the Department of Defense.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other comments online?
Yes, Commissioner, let's see, M.C. Green, we had a right tag fire in the Capitol last Wednesday. Next comment, M.C. Green, Commissioner Maribito, you brought up a subject of controversy and expressed, expressed a controversial opinion in a government meeting that was inappropriate, not on the agenda, and in my opinion, out of order. M.C. Green, still waiting for the director to return my phone call. Please add an additional item to my request, i.e., why are some public comments from the chat mentioned and others not? I'll tell you that we try to read them as they come in. There seems to be a bit of a delay.
Okay, I will reach out to her today and answer any questions she has. I believe we received a phone number yesterday. I was in that meeting from about 4 till a little after 6:00, and I'll call her today and be glad to answer any questions she has. Okay. Would either one of you gentlemen have anything to say? Okay. Okay. All right, our next meeting will be on January 19th at 10:00 AM in this room. Thank you and have a good day.